Okay, we're gonna get started. Allison, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have appointments. And Ron and Tony, this is the approval of the energy conservation policy.
Way back, I don't know, 2009, we kicked around an energy conservation policy and it never went anywhere, basically because the Energy Committee kinda went into ideas of someone, so we kinda revised it. I assume the select board has all, has read it. And basically, what it is, is to conserve energy townwide. And I have, we'd like to hand over, I got a couple of them if anybody wants one.
I think it's up on the screen too.
Oh, it's up on the screen. Sorry.
And serving energy.
And paper.
And paper. Nobody wanted these, I wasted all this paper. Well, anyway, we're trying to get the town to take energy conservation seriously. And when you take energy conservation seriously, you're saving money. That's the whole idea. At budget committee meetings, you'll hear over and over and over again that two-thirds of the budget is already set in stone because of contractual agreements and all kinds of different things, whether they're union or for fire trucks or whatever, there's very limited room to actually cut. And we feel, the Energy Committee, that this is one place where it can cut. And it might not be a giant cut, but any cut is better than no cut. And just try to get a mindset of everything you do. So basically, this basically mentions more office equipment and lots of things, but it's not meant just for that. It's meant to be able also. So when the word "equipment" comes across, you're really talking about not only coffee machines, but you're talking about trucks, cars, whatever. And when you talk about saving electricity, you're also talking about saving fuel, whether it's gasoline or diesel fuel or heating oil or whatever it is. So basically, right down the line here, we won't take all night. It says roll supervises, priorities, establish priorities, set a good example, educate the employees and so forth. I don't really wanna take all the time. And then, one that hits me right off is replace equipment with more energy efficient when appropriate. And we have a warrant article coming up. This is a good example of this. If our department has a warrant article coming up with $4,000 to replace lighting that is ancient, well, it's the original lighting, this is exactly what we're talking about. So if a department head or anybody, we're urging them to, every year, in the budget process, to take a look at the equipment. Is it wasting money? Would it be better to replace it? And that's, we're encouraging that. And I'm not going to go through all the things that it says here, switching off machines and so on. It's basically common sense. And what we're trying to do is get town employees from town manager select board all the way down the line and committee members and so forth to think of energy as they would in their own house and conserve it, therefore save it.
Any questions? Marty first.
Tony, why if the, if trucks and cars are supposed to be included in this, is it not written specifically in here?
I don't know.
Okay, I think that it should-
We left it out and I think that it actually, it should be specifically noted. You're right, absolutely.
It should be, simply because if, you know, if a bad bolt of lightning wipes all four of us out one day, or maybe you too. This is how, this is the way lawyers are taught to think. Then there's, you know, then the policy is here and it doesn't say that.
Right. Well, I think, I think it should be amended absolutely.
Okay, that's one thing. And then the other thing is, um, what's, is there some sort of a mechanism? Do you recommend some sort of a mechanism for if some department in town is replacing something, who decides what's the most energy, I mean, how do they determine what's a more energy efficient way of replacing something than defined enough?
Well, hopefully, they would ask for advice.
Okay, then maybe that should be part of the protocol.
And from the Energy Committee or even from the town manager or from somebody of expert, okay? That hopefully that would happen, you know, so that, yes, exactly. And we would also hope that when they did replace, again, equipment and so on, that they did get advice and that they do get a better energy efficient piece of equipment, whether it's a truck or a coffee machine or whatever the heck it happens to be. One of the things we would like to see are where the Energy Committee is sort of challenging the departments to show us at the end of 2014 that they really took this to heart and they all have a budget of heating oil, lights, et cetera, and, you know, water consumption, general supplies, it's just paper. We'd love to see a 10% reduction in that by the end of 2014. And that's an unofficial challenge that I guess myself and other members of the committee are making to the town. Whoever works the town, whether it be, again, from Fred to whoever, and take this thing seriously. And just kind of a competition between the departments as to what percentage. Obviously, some departments use lots of gasoline, some don't and so on. But a percentage of that, we'd love to see a 10% reduction.
Yeah?
Fluorescents are better than incandescents, but LEDs are taking over. You don't have the mercury involved with the fluorescents. Those LEDs last forever and they use very little electricity, so that's something that we'd wanna-
Yeah, and that, again, I think goes back to what Marty was saying. What, how do you determine what is the best replacement, whether it's a white bulb or a truck or whatever? Yeah, exactly. This is not meant to specifically tell you exactly what to do. This is more of the policy to encourage this. And the amendments that Marty suggested have been mentioned to me before. And I think that's, we do need those in there.
Tony, can I just, so in this lighting, the second sentence there, the use of fluorescents is encouraged. You'd recommend we amend that to include fluorescents and LEDs or replace fluorescents with LEDs?
Well, LEDs are the most efficient thing, but they're also very expensive. So I think that would have to be taken into consideration. I'd love to see all of these.
Maybe it should say the most efficient because next year-
Next year, what do you say?
Right, I mean, there's always something coming down the line.
Best practices.
Best practices, whatever fits. Exactly. Thank you.
Are you gonna hold this until, just Brian?
The thing, I guess, from one department, you know, if someone wanted to come to us, they're gonna ask us questions on recreation, you know, that's where our expertise is. Fire chief, they're gonna ask him about fire. This shouldn't be something that's added on to each department. I mean, when we've got people who really know what they're talking about. And I guess, you know, I'm saying that the department heads either should be required to or, you know, the Energy Commission should be looking into everything, I guess you could say, an energy audit like you've done in the past, to see what's being done and what suggestions are out there on a regular basis. I mean, we have a brand-new police department, but that doesn't mean that next year there isn't something that's gonna be invented that's gonna cut the electrical or the heating costs down in half. So, but it shouldn't be the police chief's responsibility to go out and try to look for that on a regular basis. He's got much more important things to do in reference to his department.
Well, I think that was answered a lot wrong when I said the Energy Committee was there to help people do this. We don't have all the answers, but we know where we can find out the answers or find somebody to help us. We work with lots of different advisors, it just isn't, you know, I'm not gonna pretend to be an expert, 'cause I'm not, but I know where to find them. So you're right. So what we have encouraged is department heads to come to us. You know, we can't go and spy on them or go and beat them over the head. They need to take the lead. And this is why, you know, it, from the selectmen, a policy that department heads have to take seriously, we would hope, and that's why I've thrown out this 10% challenge. Does that make it or not? I don't know. But to take it seriously, and it would be really good if department heads and employees and whoever could report back to the select board, or town manager, I should say, you know, we've done this, we're gonna do that, or we need to do this, you know, in efficiency-wise. And then, if it takes a warrant article, such as the warrant article to replace the lighting in the fire department, then that needs to be looked at and then supported. And we certainly support, for our example, changing the lighting in the fire department. Makes sense, it's old, it's antiquated.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you.
So we're going to update this and then bring it back to be voted on at the end of our next meeting?
Yeah.
And who's, who's going to make the changes?
You are.
Tony or Ron? Ron's gonna make the changes.
You know the issue with the automobile? Do you have some ideas as to what that should be and where it should go? In terms of a classification here?
Um, yeah, I have an idea, but I think Ron knows too. I mean, Ron and Tony know what it might be, right? I mean, instead of just mentioning office equipment, we're also going to mention vehicles.
In terms of what though?
In terms of idling, in terms of-
Okay, that's right. Fuel? The other, the other suggestion I would make is that very last section on lighting and HVAC, you go from a policy language to a first and second person. You start talking as, you know, in your home, you may wanna just change the tense there and keep it all as a, as a policy writing. It's fine the way it's written, it's just a little different tense and a different way of addressing the issue. All right, next, the appointments, Ron and Allison Bolt, Reedeway signage. And who wants to speak to that? Allison? Ron? Could you speak up?
Sure. I wanna make it really clear that this is the last thing we wanna do because we really like the Wynn's very much and the whole family and Andy Smith and all that. And we did try to resolve this amicably over a period of time. And I just don't want people to think this is a personal thing at all because it absolutely is not. You have a picture there, close?
Uh, yes.
And as you look at that picture, may I point out, we not only have two real estate signs, we have a stop sign, a very rusted tilted roadside, and we have three stakes that remain there. You can see one of them to the right of the picture with the orange flag on it, which is residue from when the road was graded back in the spring. I did remove one of them 'cause it was left in my driveway, but, you know, I tried to respect the fact that this is town involvement. I would like permission before the end of the night to remove those, but they're not serving a purpose now that I'm aware of.
To that, we would have to direct it to George. Did you talk to Mr. McNamara before the night's over, please?
Well, sure, not a problem. Ron, would you please?
Thanks for the opportunity to address the board. And I'm gonna read this because otherwise I'll forget something.
Okay.
So, "Two off-premise real estate marketing signs have been placed on the town-owned portion of Reedeway at the intersection with North Littleton Road, Route 135. Both signs were stalled without any warning, much less the request for permission, and have become permanent figures on our road. One has been in place for about six months and one has been in place for about a year and a half. In fact, it's been in place so long that it is now showing wear and tear. It's bent in half, actually." So, "The background is the town owns a fee simple 50-foot swath on Reedeway. That includes about 10-15-foot grassy area on either side of Reedeway. These areas visually appear to be an extension of the homeowner's property and are maintained by the abutting homeowners. Our house is the first on the left at the entrance of Reedeway, making it particularly attractive to Realtors for marketing any property on the road. When we moved here 10 years ago, we wanted to make the front of our property as appealing as possible and to fit in with the rural nature of the area. Towards this end and in the same area we're discussing, we, one, replaced a weather-worn tree with an attractive frasier fir, installed a decorative boulder and some small bushes, and erected an attractive stone wall. In addition, we have maintained the town-owned land. All of these features are now blocked by the two real estate signs. Add to this stop sign, the rusty Reedeway signpost, and the temporary road stakes, and we now have an unsettling mess at the end of our road and in the front of our property. Also, the arrow on one real estate sign could be interpreted as pointing toward our property, not to the actual house for sale at the other end of the street. We do not wish for someone to think that our property is for sale. We have directly contacted both Realtors and asked that the signs be removed. One indicated that the removal would be the decision of their client. That sign remains in place. The other Realtor moved the sign to the other side of Reedeway, but later brought it back to our side, to the original spot. At this latter one, at one point, the town manager was told that they intended to remove the sign. Nevertheless, that sign remains. We appreciate the support of the town effort to try to resolve this situation." So to recap, there are two signs installed on town property. These signs were installed without notice or permission. These signs are marketing two off-premises properties. These signs are not temporary. These signs are degrading our quality of life. So our request is that the Board of Selectmen take action to have these two off-premises real estate signs removed from the town-owned property of Reedeway. These signs belong one inch to Century 21 and Peabody Smith. We have tried and failed to resolve this situation with the Realtors and through the town manager and therefore bring it for you today for a solution. Thank you.
Well, you know, I have to say that I sympathize. We talked about this before. There isn't a policy at this point about signs on town property. And I think we realize that if we make a blanket decision about how, whether there're gonna be signs or not signs on town property, we are going to affect all kinds of people who maybe are not presenting a problem for anybody else. But I, I think that it's unfair to the, in this case, to the Bolts to have signs just staying there for months and months on end.
Well, what the, I think we could try, probably, if I forget this, in that, you know, when it affects individual residents, you know, when, for instance, when you're setting up signage on public property and it affects, it simulates that property, that of a residence, as opposed to, you know, along the highway or, you know, any of the public routes that we have. I know that I wouldn't want that in front of my house.
I wouldn't want it in front of mine.
I wouldn't want it in front of mine for how long? A year and a half?
One of them a year and a half and one for 12.
On and off, they put it on the other side of the street and my neighbor removed it because he wasn't aware that that was town property.
I think the length of time here is pretty pertinent, is number one. Number two, when we talked about this last time, some of the merchants on Main Street, all of a sudden became concerned because they have their, their A-trains out there on the sidewalk and- It's in front of their business. Right.
And they should take them in if I-
Well, the point is, whatever we do here would have to be very specific to this particular- Right, and it doesn't have to be a blanket policy. It's just, you know, this is, this has an impact on a residential property that does pay taxes. And it does affect, to some degree probably, what the property values.
And it has made considerable effort to, to keep that part looking nice. I mean, looking, in keeping with the rest of their property. I mean, some people have property that they clearly don't care about.
See that, and they can install sunflowers in front of the signs.
But they might as well just get rid of them.
Right, yeah. No, my point, I'm, I'm just-
I know.
But, yeah, there's, there's a lot of effort that's been put into that part of the property, but it does have an impact on residential property. Do we need a legal opinion?
We have had a legal opinion and that is that it's town property and US Board of Selectmen have the right to do whatever you choose. Might I add one, one point? I think the Bolts did bring up the fact that I talked with the Century 21 owner and they said they would remove it. It was not removed. I also talked to the Peabody and Smith contact and he indicated to me that he had contacted Mrs. Bolt and she had given him permission to put it there. Is that correct?
No. He had an agent call me. Andy and I chatted at Rotary and I told him I was unhappy with that sign. He said to me, "Well, we want goodwill with the community." And then, his agent called me and that was a female. And by no means did I give her permission. She's the one who said to me she couldn't remove it unless my neighbor said it was okay to take it away from the front of my house. I never gave Andy permission. And if, if there's a misunderstanding about that, it is indeed a misunderstanding. May I also say one other thing?
Go ahead.
It seems to me that the problem here is not just signage all over the place in town property, but it's real estate signage. And in our particular case, Reedeway is one turn off the main road. Now, I understand that if in fact you have a property that's up a mountain and down some roads that you might want to try to do those things and work with property owners so that they don't get lost. But in our case, there's, there's no problem finding our street. It's clearly marked and it's right off the main road, so.
But, you know, I think, in all fairness, I think that when people are driving around looking for something to buy, they look for real estate signs. I mean, that's how I tell what's for sale and what's not for sale in a, in a community. And if somebody is at the end of a, of even just a short road, if their sign is up by their property and very few people drive by, they're at a, at a certain disadvantage. But it seems to me that there ought to be a way to sort of address both concerns. And it's, and that probably is short-term, you know, a short, a short period of time that those kinds of signs are allowed to stand in the town right of way. But I think both of these signs have gone beyond short-term, at six months and a year and a half.
The street sign that's now-
Leaning.
Leaning. Could that be fixed?
Sure. Well, it may be frozen in, but we can, we can straighten that, yeah.
Just bend it.
Is that visible in the photo?
Yeah, we gave it all to you. You can see the stakes and everything.
Just list to the-
Ah, yes. It's a tall, tall sign too.
Marty, what would be the wording there?
I don't know. Fred, would you please call those two Realtors and tell them that the Board of Selectmen said that they should take their signs down now?
That would be tough. We'll take our action. Do we wanna do this as consensus or do we wanna actually make a motion?
I move that we tell Fred to call the two Realtors and tell them to take their signs down now.
Within what period of time?
A week. A day.
Seven days from today.
Well, it's, it's Christmas. By, by the end of the day on Friday of this week.
I'd like it done before Christmas.
Okay, before Christmas.
Yeah, good Christmas present.
By the end of the day tomorrow.
There you go. They know where they are. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Very good.
Mike, just to let you know, I can guarantee the response, you're gonna be back. They are frozen into the ground and they will not be able to pull them out.
They can cut them off.
They can cut them off, but-
It's free buddy's line.
I, I'm not trying to back up anybody. I just had a shovel that was in the ground six inches and I can't get it out, so I'm the house. So it's the ground-
They put them in and they can get them up.
Oh, I agree, but-
There you go. Okay. Okay, uh, let's see, we have Ryan Glass, Parks and Recreation.
I don't believe Ryan is here.
Ryan is here.
I'm here.
There you go. Go for it, Ryan.
Did we forget a beat?
Yeah, you just forgot the beat. There we go.
The little background for the board on this, there is a warrant article that requires the town to have a hearing on accepting any gift over or grant over $5,000. What has transpired is the Littleton youth hockey-
Yes.
Is disbanding. They had some money left in account, in an account, asked the town if there was something that they would like and hence the rink liner. And now I'll let Brian pick it up.
Okay.
Yeah, they had approached us back, oh, probably at least six months ago. Again, asked us what we wanted, what would be nice. And we just said, well, a rink liner would be nice. That way, when the, what's just happened with the weather, the water doesn't go anywhere, it stays in a small pond. The rink liner showed up after we gave them some measurements. Realistically, we didn't even know of a value. And we're still actually trying to figure out and find out what that is. Basically, I mean, we're, from what we could look up on the internet, we think it was probably maybe a $3,500 value to this, so. But it's honestly, it's just a big piece of plastic that weighs about 1,200 pounds.
Was the, was the actual cost 5,000, Lou? And you think it's about worth for you?
Well, the estimated bill, including shipping, which today I was actually, I went on and I pulled up the shipping costs, just a rough estimate with the type of material size. I mean, shipping could be upwards of $2,000 for something that's that heavy with that size.
That's not the value of the items.
No, and that's why I said, I think the value of the item is probably closer to that $3,500 value. So generally, we would just go in front of the board saying, can we accept this? Technically, 50% of it is, was, I guess, given or donated to Friends of Remick Park as well. So it's, it's well under the 5,000.
I think it's safe to say we don't wanna pay for shipping back.
No. Not with a hard dollar on top of it.
Let's just say we're not gonna appropriate that money.
I move to accept the gift of the skating rink.
Regardless of-
Regardless of, regardless of the-
Under this weather, it was all ready and open for this weekend, so.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So, next is John Hennessy.
Asked John to come tonight to talk about the River District redevelopment commission and the progress that they've made. You've seen on a couple of the draft warrant article lists, a couple of warrant articles for that. He has been working very hard with the committee in pulling together the numbers of the project and just wanted to bring you up to date as to what is happening with the, with the group.
The last time I was here was September. Gave you an update then, the past three months or so, we made a lot of progress, as Fred mentioned. Just to review for the folks who weren't here at that meeting, we've got a commission of 12 people put together. We're focusing on the river corridor between Bridge Street by Cory's Sport Shop all the way down to Cottage Street, focusing at this point primarily on the north side of the river where we are here, but it includes the south side as well that we're taking a look at. We have three primary goals. We're looking at fixing some problem areas that exist today. We're looking to, talked a lot about the tax rate at recent meetings with the Budget Committee and with yourselves. On the spending side, what we're looking to do is actually impact the tax rate by increasing the tax base and the income to the community, help offset the taxes, and to bring more tourism dollars in the community. I've got about 70 people working on the project with us so far for the past year or so. And, right, if you flip a slide, this is the general area that I just mentioned. If you go one more, this is the vision of what we're working towards. What we're trying to do is align, this is really small, I understand, but align Main Street with the river and really create one more attractive district to bring both businesses and tourists to the community and as a side benefit for all of us residents to use and enjoy ourselves. We see the river as a really untapped asset that we should utilize to our advantage in many different ways. The problem areas that I mentioned are both below ground and above ground. Below ground, this infrastructure along that Saranac Mill Street corridor is the oldest infrastructure in the town of Littleton. During the Main Street project, we were able to fix some of that. And we're looking to fix a good portion of the, the infrastructure- fix a good portion of the infrastructure underground as the wastewater and the sewage systems. We had a problem that you're aware of that popped up recently in that regard as well.
That was a not intended pun, correct?
Correct. Correct. Unintentional. And then above ground, the two problem areas that we're focusing on primarily right now, one is the intersection of Saranac and Meadow, which we have some visuals of as well. Keep going. As you can see, this one vehicle takes up most of the roadway. It's not wide enough to safely travel in both directions with two vehicles, as well as trying to turn up the street, coming out of that intersection is impossible to do without crossing the yellow line industry and the other lane of traffic, as well as coming down the hill and trying to take a left onto that road. So the recommendation is to utilize the Bridge Street intersection, which is a 90-degree, which is much safer and more accessible and really improve that roadway there. Thanks to Riverside Engineering of Littleton, we've got some initial mapping work that we've done already on that to provide for those concerns that I mentioned.
So this entrance, the current entrance of Saranac, would be replaced with kind of a jug handle, the entrance tying into the existing Bridge Street intersection.
And the other problem area is behind the town offices, behind the Bank of New Hampshire building, which we can see here as well. The roadway basically comes directly into this parking lot and tries to go around it and then continue down the road. You've got about four roads meeting in this one area with some utilities as well. Visibility coming from this direction that we're looking at is very poor where two roadways meet. So this is the other main concern that we have, and if you flip again, we've all, a little visual depiction of what it feels like in that area. This is the vision here. We have a nice straight roadway with roads that come into each other very safely with high visibility, and also addresses some parking issues that we've always had and try to create more parking spaces for the Main Street corridor as well. And we've got some preliminary mapping done here. This is a main part of the progress that we've made since last time I was here. All this detail that you see is a compilation that Horizon's Engineering of Littleton put together for us based on previous projects that have been completed in this area. And the yellow overlay is the intersection we just talked about here with Saranac and Meadow, and would show the improved straightened roadway coming all the way through to an improved area behind Bank of New Hampshire. So those are the problem areas that we're looking at. The opportunity here, as Littleton's become more of a regional center, we really think that by doing this work, we can bring in some economic development, which will increase the tax base, and by aligning the river with the downtown, really take the strength that we have right now and attract more tourism dollars to the area. So the next step is to take what you've seen so far and put a plan together that'll allow us to go out and try to get funding commitments from federal and state agencies to help with the project costs that we'll then move towards. So there's a $50,000 warrant article to do just that. It'll be preliminary engineering work, which we'll then spend the next year going out and trying to source outside funding. We are also soliciting private funds. We've got $25,000 committed so far to do an initial project down in the area that's ready for a project right now, which is the Mill Street area, which would include a view deck, some sidewalk improvements, and some lighting down there. So the commission's authorized, devoted to go out and secure $80,000 total of funding, and we'll spend the winter securing the remaining funds on top of that 25. We've also got two grant awards so far, totally about $30,000 for improvements related to this, and including the Rails to Trails that I grant that the town applied for, just was awarded as well. So we feel like we're in a really good position now to get a lot done over the next year, and what we're looking for is the Select Board's support to do that with these warrant articles and the town's support as well to move forward and make some good progress.
No?
Ultimately, if the volume of traffic coming onto Meadow Street from a new direction reaches a certain point, would they put coordinated lights there?
They have to.
Because that's a hard, I mean, that's a great improvement, but it still creates an issue sometimes, like right now, tonight, that it's difficult to get down onto Meadow Street.
Two other points. Well, actually, North Country Council did a traffic study for us in that region, and 1,000 vehicles per day travel through that Bank of New Hampshire area there. And there's also no walkways going through that area, which is a safety concern.
John, is there a fund that people can actually contribute to?
Certainly. We've been working with...
Want to speak to him again?
We've worked with Littleton Main Street Inc., which is a 5-1(c)(3), which can take individual contributions as well. They're supportive of the project and are willing to do that if there are individuals that want to contribute.
Hey, for the audience, this is end of the year, so if you're making any donations, this is the time to do it.
Dan, did you hear that?
Just figured I'd give a plug here.
Yes, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Good, thanks. Any other questions? Dan?
Curiosity question. What are they going to do with the street that's coming in at a 35 or 45-degree angle? Are they going to eliminate that totaling, or what?
Yeah, it would have to. Fred, you want to...
Hidden Brook? Is that the one we're talking about?
No, no. He's talking about where...
You're going to change it to Bridge Street instead of where it goes through now?
Oh, you're talking about 45 degrees. Horizontal, not vertical. Right. Well, Hidden, is it Hidden Brook? That's pretty close to 45.
It is.
The thought now is that the existing street would revert to the abutters. The town would have to, so-called, throw up the road, and it would likely revert to the abutters.
Okay.
Allison?
I have a question, and pardon me, I didn't hear the other briefing. I understand they're trying to get private contributions, but what is the potential for this to become something the taxpayers are going to have to pay heavily into? And I ask this as the chairman of the school board who's concerned about Lakeway Elementary needing to be replaced, which will be a very expensive project, and we have the town garage and all these other things, so can you help me with that? What do you foresee as the town's contribution tax-wise to what you're doing?
Part of the money that we're looking to raise for this year will give us exact cost estimates on each phase of the project, so that we'll present the phases to the taxpayers. So I don't have an exact cost estimate for you, but what we have already done is met with our congressional delegates in these state and federal agencies to get them interested in the project, so that once we have this preliminary engineering done, we'll have that in hand to go out and actually get commitments.
Yeah, but if private donations fail and grants fail, would you be looking at the town to...
Certainly, the town will need to make an investment in order to move this forward.
And you will know exactly how big an investment after you do this preliminary work?
Correct.
Okay, Dan?
During the charrette, the figure of 30 million came up, and also the fact that the town would have to come up with, I believe it was 20% of that.
I'd love to address that. Dan, the $30 million that came up in the charrette included a number of buildings that were likely to be, I mean, that were absolutely going to be privately owned and privately paid for. That was not, that was not... What we're looking at in this section, the portion that we're doing now, is infrastructure upgrades. So storm sewers, water, sewer, power, roadways, signage, the stuff that has to be done. You know, it's hard to get anybody to invest in an area of town if they can see that everything is rundown, and they think that they're going to end up having to either deal with bad infrastructure or pay themselves to put in all the new infrastructure. So the first part of this project is specifically intended to determine what needs to be done to upgrade that section of town, that River District. That will be broken down into portions that presumably don't all have to be done. I mean, if we don't get any grants and we don't get any private funding, there may be some things that the town ultimately will have to fix, but the town is ultimately going to have to fix some of that stuff anyway. We can't just continue to let sewers and storm drains go bad and dump stuff into the river that's not supposed to be being dumped in, or dump stuff into people's basements that occasionally has happened in this town. So it's not an all or nothing. You know, it's not like, "Oh, we have to spend $30 million, or we aren't doing any of it." It's not like that at all. There are things, what we're going to do is determine which things have to be done, which things ought to be done, where is the funding coming from, and put it together as an overall project in a way that makes sense for the town to do.
I think the key word that you glossed over, you said it a couple of times, was that doing right now and like a first phase or something. So I don't, and this is just me, I don't, from the charrette and everything that I saw, I don't envision this as being just infrastructure. That's just the beginning.
It's preparing for private investment, I think, is where it goes.
The charrette, as Marty said, went beyond what this commission is looking at. We're not looking at developing buildings, and that was the most significant portion of that big number that was thrown out during the charrette.
But I think the 20% figure, no matter what it turns out to be, as far as grants and things, I think the 20% figure is legitimate? Question mark?
I don't think that we can say that at this point, Dan. It may be that in order to get 80% of funding for some phase of the project, we have to put 20% up. That might be true, but...
Just something for Allison to think about as a possibility.
Well, I think it's safe to say that if we don't get any grant funding and we don't get any private funding, that we still need to know what has to be done down there in order to have, for the infrastructure to work. I mean, you know, it may not be the time to change intersections of roads or buy pieces of property, but it might be. It might be that this is the best time. But you can't make any decisions without, I mean, it's, I think it's unwise, and I think as a group, we believe that it's unwise to just sort of make seat-of-the-past decisions about what to do and what not to do if we don't know what needs to be done and approximately what it's going to cost, which is what we're trying to do with this next, with this first phase. And I'm not glossing anything over. I'm merely talking about this first phase is we're attempting to raise some money so that we can determine what needs to be done and how much it's going to cost to do it.
Brian?
I just wanted to, certainly, I mentioned it before, that I guess to bring into this, I agree with Marty, you know, eventually, we're going to have to keep up with utilities down there, whether it's water, sewer, electric. And it's, next to the river is just beautiful real estate, or whatever it may be. With the, basically, the national government making changes with the flood program, who knows if they're going to fix it back to what it used to be, because they've had a lot of complaints, but we as a whole need to basically talk to lenders as well, and that needs to be part of the program. As it is right now, I mean, just as one example, I had someone who had come to us just for a small business loan to go into a place down there, and I don't know for a fact, but I can honestly throw in there that they didn't go where they were intending and wanting to, because they would have had to carry flood insurance at an ungodly price just to be renting in there. So to put these buildings in there, it may be very expensive to be where they are now. It may have to be, you know, where maybe they're offset to the opposite side of the road in order to be lendable, I guess you could say. But it's something that we definitely need to consider to, you know, keep thinking about, because we'd hate to, you know, sink all this money and say, "Come be here," and then someone can't build a $3 million building because they can't afford the flood insurance that goes along with it.
I think all of this is just in preparations, and we have an idea what that picture could look like, what the potential liabilities and costs would be. So, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Since we have a good cadre of the DPW Garage Study Committee here, might you like to move that up?
Yep, absolutely. Okay. So you're going to get ahead with the manager's report. George and Brody? You want to tell them who you are first?
My name's Brody Tu, and I'm here tonight representing the new highway garage. I'm the chairman of the committee. And in June, we had our first meeting, and it's 10 members from different assets from the town. And our focus is to look and rebuild the current garage. So after we've studied the garage and looked at the feedback that we have on file, the current garage was built in 1958, and an engineer did a study in October 2012. Came up with two major points. They provided some baseline recommendations, but the two biggest points were, first, they determined that the roof cannot be insulated. And essentially, what that comes down to is if we insulate the roof, it was never designed to take a snow load, the building could collapse. So with that said, they also did a complete evaluation of the structure, and they said when the town has money feasible to rebuild, it would be consideration. So in turn, this committee was formed. So we've gone through a lot of steps through our design phase. Our original design was about 13,500 square feet with multiple different roof pitches. We determined going forward that the cost would be too high, but we honestly wanted to build a garage not just for today, but for the future, but with money in mind. First building was roughly going to be $1.4 to $1.5 million. So we tailored it down a bit, and we sent out a building, a relatively easy design, focusing a lot on the current garage's layout at 12,000 square feet. We projected it out to some contractors. We had nine responses, and they all came in at the $1.2 million. Seven of them followed the standards from the RFQ process, and we then selected three contractors to meet with directly. We then narrowed that to two, and one eliminated themselves in that final process. So we have a contractor in mind. However, all the subcontracting in those portions has not taken place because obviously the warrant article isn't up yet. So again, a little bit more about the new building and the new design. The new design would be on the same footprint it is currently. We feel that it's the town-owned property. We obviously feel that the current building, it doesn't make sense to try to fix it or what have you. It's had its useful life, as we feel, and our recommendation is to rip it down and start fresh. Obviously, and often the energy committee's saying is, energy efficiency is a huge target of this. Specifically, with currently, it's not designed to take a snow load. All the heat's going out of it. It's melting, and it's causing not just heat loss, but all the ice sheds off in front of the garage doors. It builds up and actually develops a hump throughout the winter. And as the hump gets larger, they have some issues with equipment, specifically the backhoe. Its extended portion of the backhoe can barely fit in the door. So we decided to go with a shed-style roof with all the snow literally shedding to the rear, and some other additional things. Last year's heating cost with the current garage was $14,000. The new facility will be heated off the pellet boiler. Right now, the current garage is only supplemented with that heat. There is other heating inside. One very interesting thing we discovered through our process was passive solar doors. Our projected building is going to have six bays, and these doors are designed to allow heat and light to come in. And I was actually talking to the contractor that puts them in, it's a New Hampshire-based company, and they had recently installed them in a fire station in southern New Hampshire. And during the day, the fire department does not need to run heat or electricity and lighting. It completely handles itself, obviously, at night. Lighting comes on and heat, but it is just that much more efficient. Additionally, with that, it has to be southern-facing, and our facility is perfectly aligned for that. We are also going to hopefully install LED lighting on motion detectors, so lights do not have to be on all the time. The roof's R factor will be 34, the walls will be 21. And the last little piece, there's a second building in the rear of the facility that is heated currently. There is some supplies that needs to kept warm. That building will go completely to cold storage, so that heating cost will go away, and all of that material will then move into the new structure. Lastly, some safety concerns. Lastly, some safety concerns. The new facility will have by code a carbon monoxide air handling unit, has detection inside, so if there is a carbon monoxide level alarm, it will evacuate all the air in the building within a minute. It's required by code. But obviously, with the heating being outside, the only real carbon monoxide would be from the equipment, and if there's a mechanic working on it for a period of time, that may have to come out. The biggest thing from safety is backing. That is a huge concern, specifically with the plows this time of year backing into. So our design actually has garage bays on either side. The building will be a pull-through. So essentially, at the end of the day, they can pull through, first thing in the morning, and exit out the other end. So you're going to eliminate a tremendous level of backing.
So there'll be 12 overhead doors?
Correct. It might be only 11, with the mechanic's bay might be in one of the back corners, and he might be kind of stuffed kind of into one of those corners. But, no pun intended there, but 11 or 12 is that. And the solar doors will only be on the front of the building, obviously, where the sun. And one more thing on the solar, the sun in the winter is much lower, a 45-degree angle. In the summer, it's much higher, so it doesn't heat, you know, it's something 170 degrees or something.
Right. Okay, questions?
Well, the doors are open a lot in the summertime, aren't they?
Exactly.
Okay, Dan, we knew there was going to be one there.
Don't they have a carbon monoxide, I don't know if it's a detector or a scrubber in there now in the office?
We currently have carbon monoxide detectors, yes, if there's a high level. But what the system he's talking about has an evacuation fan, so in the new building, the detector senses the high level of carbon monoxide. It then kicks this automatically on and evacuates all the air in the building within one minute.
What do they have now? Is it a detector or is it a scrubber?
It's a detector that has a warning that comes on and alarms. We then manually have to go over and turn on a fan that by no means is up to the evacuation standard the new one would be. Then we open the doors and do all the things we're supposed to do. And back to the overhead doors, the current design has four doors in the back and six overhead doors in the front. The six doors in the front are on the south side, that would have to be the solar passive. The reason we did not have the other two doors aligning is those are the mechanic's bays, and there could be a pull-through that have work benches, tool benches for assemblies such as that. Any other questions? This. Who's back there?
The chief.
Oh, chief, okay.
Brody, what are your plans for life, safety, and fire protection?
The building will be sprinkler part of that, and we are still at the design stage. No final plans have been evaluated, and once we do have those final plans, we're going to obviously incorporate the fire department to ensure that the design and the codes that the contractor says we're meeting meets the standards of the town as well.
Have you identified any special storage or hazards that need special attention?
There is, there is fuels, obviously. That's probably the biggest bulk storage. The used oil burner will still be in service. That is a portion. And other fuels and degreasers, but that is another targeted item as we kind of develop along in this.
Any other questions? Good thinking.
Brian? Was this going to go to the town this year on a warrant article at all?
Yeah.
The dollar amount and everything?
Yeah.
Okay. The only thing I ask is, and this was, I was having a conversation with, well, it used to be LGC, with their attorney on parks and rec issues a while back, and we were talking back about insurance and other wonderful issues, lawsuits, you name it. And the two of us were discussing something that he said that he was in hopes that he was going to be eventually sending something out to the towns, that when something like this or any project that where the work is being done for the town by something that's being put out to bid, that all towns need to be looking to add additional wording to the bid specs, not to cost any more money, but to make sure that proper insurance is obtained. What they're finding out is, after the fact, if there's a liability issue, structural, whatever it is, many times the proper insurance has not been maintained. And it doesn't necessarily show up in the proof of insurance that the town is requesting. And no one's really doing anything wrong, it's just times have changed. And I can kind of discuss it later on, but it's just something that if we're going to be putting that so-called bid out there, the wording needs to be put in there. So again, you have one general that bids out on this, you need to make sure that he, you know, if he's having an electrician come, and the electrician's from Vermont, that he's actually, his insurance coverage actually covers doing work in New Hampshire. Many cases, it does not work that way anymore. And this is not showing up, it's not being asked for. And I think his name was Tom, that I spoke with down at LGC, but again, it's just wording, but it should be something that the town should definitely be looking to put in there when it's put out the bid. Again, it doesn't cost the contractor any more money, it's just making sure, because believe it or not, there's insurance policies out there now. They don't allow.
We should have that conversation with Fred after this.
Well, they don't allow people to work on town entity things in some cases, so it's.
Like I said, it's.
Yeah.
Is it coverage, is it the level of coverage that?
It's not necessarily the level. In some cases, I'll just give an example. Some insurance companies don't allow for, someone may do earthwork, have a backhoe, do regular work, but they actually do not allow for the people to work on main streets or state streets, or actually work for, you know, the town or the state.
All right, just a second. George, do you have any, any thoughts?
Yeah, I think generally what he's looking for is you want to make sure all the subcontractors are insured to the full umbrella as the general contractor is. It's a very standard thing that's in most of the AIG documents.
Well, it's not just, it's not the coverage amount anymore.
Let George finish, please.
It's a standard requirement in 90% of all the AIG contract documents, which are the standard documents a lot of times between municipalities and general contractors. And we will make certain that it's in there on this job.
Well, like I said, it's not, it's not the amount, and that's where we were having the discussion. It was that there's actually no coverage for, they're not allowed to work for town or state entities.
Murray?
I just would like to say that it seems, it seems pretty straightforward that the general contractor has to make sure that all of the subcontractors have the proper insurance certificates to do the work that's being done. But that was, the question that I have, either for you, Brody, or for you, George, or for both of you, is what is the point of continuing to use the waste oil furnace?
Backup, essentially.
So that'll be the only, that'll be the only backup?
And George could probably talk to this, but also, they generate it consistently throughout the year as they change the oil, so it's essentially free heat.
I, my understanding was that the transfer station uses it too, and that they haven't had enough of it to, that they actually had to purchase oil when there was a time that they thought they were going to be able to operate completely on the waste motor oil.
And again, as I understand right now, it's still, it would only be a backup source of heat.
And it's already an existing unit?
Exactly. We wouldn't have to go out and buy anything. And that's another thing, though a lot of the equipment is old, we're doing whatever we can to salvage what we have internally to go back.
I just was, I just was curious. So, so there'll be a waste oil storage tank there also?
Yeah, it's onsite already. It's already.
How big is that? How big is that? Do we know?
I believe there's a couple 50-gallon barrels onsite in the building.
All right, any other questions? Tony?
I probably missed it, but what is the size of the new one, square footage, as opposed to what we have now?
The new one is going to, projected 12,000 square feet, and the old one?
Oh, 10,000.
10,000, okay. I didn't have it in front of me, so.
And I think we discussed it at the meeting, so the size of equipment has increased so that, you know, there's more floor space for it. George?
Well, I was kind of hoping that all of your things would fit in.
Yeah. And that's the projected, that's the projected plan. One of the huge issues we have every year is with the grater. The grater has an enormous amount of hydraulic fluid, and as you know, when we clean the snow off Main Street, the grater is used. And I just experienced it for the first time this year. It took us two days, two men, to get the grater ready to actually run and clean the snow. So if the grater is stored inside it, they keep the garage about 50, 55 degrees. It'd be a matter of going over, checking the oil, starting it, and proceedings. There's a cost savings there alone, and the wear and tear there is on the machinery once it starts with that.
And the damage.
Now, just to add a couple more things, the insulation, Brody did mention the R factors, but what we've decided to go with is a, on the ceiling right now, there's a cloth, basically, with a zero R factor because they want a hot roof. The new proposed building will have a metal standing seam roof, four inches of urethane insulation at an R factor, correct me if I'm wrong, Brody, 36?
36 or 34.
36, with a metal skin on the other side of it, a white metal skin. On the side walls, it's going to be a three-inch urethane core at 21.
21.
So we're going to go from a building with basically a zero R factor to a building with an extremely high R factor. The doors will become insulated doors, the solar passive doors. All the information we're getting from the people trying to sell them to us is telling us it basically will heat the building during the day on its own. One of the other unknowns we have is how well the pellet boiler is going to keep up. The pellet boiler was originally designed a little bit small. The reason they said that it was designed small was so that it ran continuously. It's much more efficient if it runs continuously and doesn't stop and start. Now, with a new building like this, we are increasing it in square footage, but we're also insulating the building. So we feel that the pellet boiler will keep up, and we won't need a large consumption of, let's say, propane or a number two heating fuel as a backup. There will be a backup system, yes, that will cover the areas of the meeting room, the office, the locker rooms, and the bathrooms. It would be a secondary system in that area where we would always have the waste oil boiler, excuse me, the waste oil burner out in the shop area if for some reason the boiler should fail or it had to be serviced and the heating was off for a period of time.
Wait, so are we talking about three separate heating systems?
No. The waste oil is in the current building now, and that's something that I'm being told by the crew is used for two, maybe three weeks during the brutal cold parts of winter to get the chill off so that it can keep up. We're going to keep that just for that purpose. Now, I was unaware that the transfer station was possibly having to purchase oil. Now, if we get into a situation like that, possibly we would give them their R oil so they didn't have to purchase any. That would be the most efficient and cost-effective thing to do. But at the same point, I feel it would be naive of us to throw this perfectly good waste oil burner away and not have it installed under the new contract.
No, no, I would never suggest that. That would, that would never be.
So I still want to get it installed, and whether we use it or not, that remains to be seen. Hopefully, with a fuel efficient, with, excuse me, with a well-insulated building, there's no need for it to ever be turned on. The pellet, you know, the pellet hot water supply keeps it up where it needs to be.
So the, so the primary heating system is going to be the pellet burner?
Yes.
And the backup system is going to be the already existing waste oil furnace?
In the garage.
That you have?
In the garage.
In the garage. Now, what are you talking about for keeping the office area?
In the other area, they're proposing to supply with possibly a propane split unit or a number two heating fuel split unit.
So we are talking about three separate heating systems?
Yes, yes, but they have, two of which are backup. Okay.
I think that really needs to be looked at because from what all the research I did, you should not need any backup system, obviously, keeping the waste oil furnaces, you know.
Well, we already have a couple of furnaces over there, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So I, you know, I hopefully look at that. Then the other thing, while I get to the floor, many times, people perceive of town government or any government just wanting something and not really needing it. And I'm not an engineer, I'm not a structural engineer, but I've been through that building when we went into the insulation thing. I think Brody was a little bit good on the fact that he said someday replace it. My opinion is, if you go through that, you look at it, and I realize repairs have been done, the sooner the better. And this is not, I always say wants and needs. This is not a want, in my opinion. This is a need, and I'm hoping the townspeople will back, back this proposal.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Carl?
I was just going to add that the pellet boiler is fine. The pipes from it go along quite, quite ways underground. And suppose, and anything happens, we break water mines all the time in this town. And suppose that something happens, that piping, and it breaks, and the thing shuts down, we've got to be able to heat that highway garage, so we've got to have the backup heat.
Well, they were talking about installing those, those other units as well. I mean, I'm going to get rid of them. Okay, any other comments?
Mr. Chairman? Just to wrap up on this, direct your attention to the screen. On January 20th at 6:00 PM, there'll be a bond hearing on the Littleton Public Works Garage facility. And immediately following that, at 6:45, will be the 2014 budget hearing. So I just thought this was an appropriate time to bring that into the discussion. We have to have the bond hearing for at least a half an hour, and that's why you see the 6:00 and 6:45 meeting times.
Okay. All right, now, we're ready for the manager's report.
Citizens' concerns.
Citizen, oh, wait, I'm sorry. I think I said, we jumped ahead. Citizens' concerns. Going, going, gone. Town Manager's Report.
Thank you. I won't take it quite in the order on the agenda. It was mentioned earlier in John Hennessy's presentation that the town was a recipient of the $25,000 bicycle and pedestrian grant program that will fund the, in conjunction with $30,000 from the state, will fund the removal of the rails and ties from Industrial Park Road as far east as the, as the money will, will go. Hopefully, it'll go all the way to the town line, but if it can only go to Reddington Street Bridge, I think that would be a big, big plus. So that's one thing. And then the, I think in your package, you have a 2014 calendar of events. Just wanted to, we went over a couple of those key dates, but before the 20th, budget hearing and bond is the January 14th deadline, which is the petition warrant article deadline. And then February 4th will be the deliberative session, or the first session of annual town meeting. And then Tuesday, March 11th, will be the second session of town meeting, or typically what's called town meeting day. So that, the bond budget hearing and the deliberative session will be at the high school cafeteria, and the town meeting day voting will be at the fire station. Now, I'd like to move into some finances. We had a work session last meeting. I have updated some of the numbers from the last session. I'd like to hand that out to you. One of the, I don't know if it was a mistake, oversight, what have you, but I was carrying $2.9 million in revenues from the, can you hold those? $2.9 million in revenues from the.
I think you make this type smaller.
Oh, sorry.
Is it down to an eight?
Well, the thing is, it's sized to fit.
That's almost a six.
You know, fit to size the paper, and.
Do you want to borrow my reading glasses?
No.
That's all right, I was just squinting real hard. That's all right. Oh, it's up there, yeah.
But this is here again where.
You can help me see the type.
Yeah. Shrink it down. Yeah, that's not going to be too, that's not helpful, is it? As far as numbers go.
No.
Okay. So we're going to look at it.
So just to go down through it quickly, the DPW Garage Bond is there, and the ASME Union Agreement, that's the fire highway and transfer station, we'll be going into non-public to discuss that. The union did meet last Friday and ratified the tentative agreement, so it's just pending your ratification before that is, is approved. You will see a column to the left, you'll see article number, and then the next line says budget committee support, yes or no. That references what the budget committee has, has done to date. They haven't reviewed all articles. They haven't reviewed all articles, and I, and some of the articles have changed slightly. Article number three is the selectmen's office renovation. That hasn't changed in number or amount. Budget committee did not agree with that. The call company limited insurance benefits, that remains unchanged from what you've seen before. Budget committee did agree with that. The fire department coverage, additional coverage for $45,000, that hasn't changed from previously. Budget committee passed on that pending review of the agreement. And then there were several other fire department warrant articles that were listed in the previous round. And what I wanted to go over with you tonight was sat down with the chief, and in my mind, the, some of these items are really operating maintenance items, and I like to think the town meeting is mostly approving capital purchases and large unexpected one-time purchases. But with the year end coming up, new tires, porta tank for the new tanker truck or equipment, hydrant kit, thermal imaging camera, ice auger, fire alarm system, and overhead lights, certainly all fit within that category. If you follow that line down, that's about $32,000, $33,000 for all of those items. The amount forecasted to be left in the fire department account at the end of this year is about $150,000. So even with that spending profile, we're still looking at $78,000 or so returned to the general fund.
So we would take these off of a warrant?
Take them off the warrant article.
That's a good idea.
And it simplifies the warrant. These are, you know, as I said, they're important items and really need to be purchased.
Yeah, that's good.
The problem with warrant article, if you put it on there and it says no, you can't do it anyway, even if you have the money, so...
Don't mean so.
You know, this isn't end-of-year spending gift items, but all of these items are either deferred maintenance or important additions to the operations of the fire department.
Can we get a kind of a motion?
No, I just wanted to go over that with you, so with your concurrence, I'll approve that. Moving down on the big sheet again, the police department cruiser replacement, budget committee didn't agree with that. I have changed that. Originally, it was put in as two lease purchase cruisers, if you recall. I changed that to one lease purchase and funding it entirely out of the year-end fund balance, okay? So that there would be no tax impact there. It's similar to what we did last year.
Yep. Because we bought a new police car last year, I think Paul spoke to this issue of either one or both. He was talking about maintenance costs, we would really like to see how those costs have increased, which would warrant replacing.
Okay.
And, you know, there was a discussion at the budget committee meeting about the mileage issue, and one of the budget committee members had, I think, $120,000 on his vehicle, and these vehicles that we want to replace are at $125,000 or $130,000 or whatever. It's a different kind of driving. But I think the maintenance issue here is important for people to hear, the taxpayers to hear as well.
Noticed that.
So do we know if the budget committee is going to support a single cruiser replacement? I mean, was there...
We do not. I will take it back to them.
Okay.
I asked for them to defer action on that until the police chief could, was available to address the issue. I guess they didn't feel that that was necessary, but now that we've changed the warrant article, I think it warrants going back to the budget committee and updating that.
They were, they heard from Paul as well.
And did, were they open to having it, I mean, was it just a yes or no, or was it cut back on it, or you didn't get any...
They didn't give explanations.
What was three, four, five against?
Against two cruisers. They didn't say, you know, we feel differently if it was just one, we don't know that.
They didn't discuss it.
While the chairman's coming back, the next time the cruiser set up, budget committee did not act on that because they felt as though if they weren't supporting purchasing cruisers, then you didn't need to set them up. But I also think that not acting on it left the door open for us to come back and with a revised proposal to them. I guess we'll continue going. The next item is the heavy-duty truck for the highway department. Budget committee did support that. What I have done is, there was a, I think, a mistake in either this three-year loan or the one under the Pleasant Street sidewalk, so I just went back and confirmed those numbers so that that would be a three-year borrowing for that $106,000 for the heavy-duty truck with an annual payment of a little over $37,000 or five cents on the tax rate. Then the infrastructure projects, the High Street, Carlton Street, Partridge Lake, Brook Road. That Carlton Street was Upper Grove Street, if you recall. I have changed that to Carlton Street, really for the reason that Carlton Street is as much a placeholder as anything. Carlton Street is more expensive than the Grove Street work, and as we progress, we don't have to post the warrant until January 27th. So sometime before then, I'll be back to you with any additional information. You can make the decision whether you want to go back to Grove Street or stay with this Carlton Street line item. Okay?
I like the fact Carlton Street is on it. It's one of the streets I walked.
Yeah. Well, they both need to work.
They both need it, right.
Yeah.
You don't need a cast on your ankle, right?
No.
Yeah, Carlton Street's a bad shit.
So the budget committee agreed with all four of those, so the total of that would be $213,000 or 28 cents on the tax rate. Sidewalks, Pleasant Street sidewalk, that's the SRTS, Safe Roots to School, underfunded amount. Budget committee did not agree with that. We had a bit of a discussion about that. I wish I had a better explanation as to why they didn't support that, but it's, Pleasant Street is a high-use sidewalk right there by Remick Park. It's proposed to be from Oak Hill to Pine Street. We have some money that we anticipate leftover from the Safe Roots to School improvements at the Lakeway Union Street upgrade. All of those will still be done, but there was additional money left over, about $13,000 to put towards Pleasant Street, but it needed to be supplemented with additional money. So if this is not, does not pass or is not supported, then I think that money will then, we'll put it into additional improvements, I guess, on Union Street to stay within the guidelines of the Safe Roots to School grant. Next one is transfer station. That's the standard warrant article we have annually. The budget committee supported that. The two River District warrant articles that we had talked about earlier tonight, both of those were supported by the budget committee. And that's where they ran out of time. Budget committee was at 6 o'clock, and they were losing numbers to other meetings, and so they voted to reconvene next Monday, I guess.
We had two votes that were eight-zero. There were, the whole committee, the chairman didn't vote, but the eight people did. That was the transfer station, and it was the call company limited insurance benefits. That was an eight-to-zero as well.
So the townwide revale, welfare reserve fund, those are unchanged from previous. Moving down to petition warrant articles, the, there are two Parks and Recs articles there, the pool change and building roof replacement. At the last meeting, it was suggested by the selectmen that the anticipated $5,000 from the Mount Eustace timber sale would be applied to one of those. Talked to the commissioners, and they preferred it to be applied towards the pool change and building roof, so that's why you see that. The tractor replacement is still in there at the $31,000. The library building reserve fund is estimated at $15,000, as is the cemetery trustees Glenwood wall reconstruction project. This will be the third year of that work.
Fred, you may want to ask, I'd like the squad car or police car to ask for more information on the tractor replacement. Seventeen years is a long time, but by itself, it doesn't necessarily need to be replaced. So I'm assuming we're having difficulties with it. It would be good to have that information.
Conservation Commission Fund is just the balance of their appropriations intended to put into their reserve fund. Community center wiring upgrade, you heard about that, that's unchanged from the last time. That would reallocate $5,000 from a previous warrant article to reduce the tax appropriation to $25,000. Social service agencies are rolling in. Those eight, I think, is what we're projecting now, a total of $107,000. Dropping that to the $76,000 based upon historic, that some won't pass, so rather than carrying the 14 cents to the 107, I reduce that to 10. So in the bottom right-hand column, you, or boxes, you see the summary, the 2014 proposed budget and default budget. Total expenditures is the first line of 7.9 for the proposed and 7.8 million for the default, less the projected revenues of 2.7 million. The last time, we were carrying that at 2.9, but Karen did catch that, about a $200,000 deduct. Want to just explain that a little bit if you couldn't?
We had in this year's revenues factored in $200,000 for the parking enhancement warrant article.
The Green Street.
So we had to take that or reduce our estimated revenues down.
Having said that, for the past two years, even in 2012, as well as 2013, we had about 2.9 million in actual revenues. So I think this is a conservative estimate, and I think both Karen and I believe that we'll be coming in above that amount, but that's what our current revenue projections are. So that shows you of the taxes to be raised at 5.1 million and 5.0 for the default. There's a 10 cent difference between those two, which means the proposed budget, operating budget will be $6.74 compared to $6.64 for the default. That goes up to 7.51 and 7.42 with the estimated impact of the warrant articles. If you applied the same fund balance, year-end fund balance that you did last year to next year, that would drop that by 39 cents, so bringing your tax load to $7.12, factoring in your war service and overlay of 43 cents, that brings your estimated tax rate of $7.55 for the proposed and $7.46 for the default versus the $7.40 that we had this year. Okay? And that 15 cent difference between the 7.40 and the 7.55 is about $25 on a tax bill on a $167,000 home. So quickly, that's what I've done. I don't know if there's any questions you have from the last time we went through it. I do, if you are interested, I'll just hand this out. That is the comparison sheet that we looked at previously, looking at previous years' tax rates and budgets. And on one side is, in the yellow, is 2.7 million in the revenues, and the other is the 2.9 million, okay? So one is what you've already accepted as the proposed, in the proposed budget for revenues. The other is looking at, if you go to the $2.9 million one, okay? If your highlight says 2.7, flip it over and you'll see 2.9 in 2014. Just follow that line back two years. So in 2013, we had 2.9 million, in 2012, we had 2.9 million revenues, 2011, we had 2.6 million. So I think those are the, kind of the bookends of what we're dealing with. So with that, the next thing that is most important is for us to discuss encumbrances. We're coming up to the end of the year, and there are things that we would like to have spent money on, should have spent money on, but for whatever reason couldn't spend it on for, Karen has a handout here, I think, coming around.
Good thing we can use a handout around here. Do you have yours, Fred?
So if you recall, typically at the end of the year, the board authorizes these items for encumbrances. And I guess Karen, I'll let you go and walk down through it.
There's somebody waving their hand in the back of the room.
Brody.
Yes. Fred, was that the final number for 2015, which you gave us?
Which number?
All these numbers that you give us, you know, the 2.9 million. Was that the final numbers?
No, no.
Will you give any change?
No. They won't be final until we post the warrant, January 27th, and they'll be almost final for the budget hearing, bond and budget hearing on January 20th. But until January 20th, we're still in a discussion mode, okay?
Thank you very much.
Okay. The encumbrances for year 2013, these are all based on if we have an agreement, a purchase order, or a contract, or there's some other reason why we were not able to spend the money in 2013. And an example of that is the police video camera from the grant, from a grant that we're getting. We have $2,500 that we want to encumber, that's a town share of that grant. And that grant is just getting into the process. We've got it approved, but we have got the camera purchased yet, and so it's going to end up being in 2014. Then the fire tanker truck, of course, that is a grant, and we've got the approval for the grant. We've got the purchase of the grant started, I mean, the truck started, but of course, we're not going to have the grant until, or the truck until 2014. So we're encumbering that again. And I verified that this was okay to do with the auditors, so. Engine Six, we're finishing up on the refurbishment. There is an agreement in place. We owe them still $30,000, but the truck isn't finished yet, and that one payment doesn't go out until we get the truck. Parks and Rec, we have a balance of their warrant article, and they are preparing purchase orders for that balance. And currently, their balance that's available is $8,960. So I will have documentation in place before the year end with that amount that they're encumbering. Dell's Dam Study is pending some of the Dell's Dam Study and state permitting approval, as well as the Dell's Road culvert replacement. And again, I checked with auditors to make sure, because of the permitting process, we're allowed to encumber this again. The Opera House warrant article, there's $5,092. They are purchasing some additional items that I haven't got the bill in for, so I believe it's going to be lower than that, that they're going to get some additional purchase orders for. Matching grant for the Serenac Street planning, we've got $4,000. We are, you've seen some of the planning, we haven't been billed for that yet. We've got final labor on our computer upgrade and installation. We've got final labor on our computer upgrade and installation. There's an agreement in place of that. Ready Way paving, I have forty-five thousand, and I will be getting something from George. He's emailed me with that amount of forty-five thousand left that he needs for paving. West Main Street retaining wall, it's twenty-five thousand. I know that that's pending a state permit and some water and light work and tree removal or replacement, so there's a lot of little factors that go into this, why that hasn't been done yet. Bridge Street ceiling maintenance, eleven thousand eight ninety-three. Sidewalk ceiling of thirteen thousand three hundred, and some of this will have purchase orders for year-end. These monies came from, some of these monies came from trust funds and capital reserve funds. So, if we don't encumber them, they fall to our general fund, the fund balance, and we'll have to get a warrant article to re-pull that back out of that.
Reauthorize those.
Yeah. And then we've got crushing and grinding of pavement. We're hoping that this will be completed before year-end, but we're estimating fifty-one thousand five hundred dollars on that. And that's our total general funding encumbrances. That's four hundred seventeen thousand seven nineteen. We have Littleton Library that wants to encumber nine thousand five hundred and nineteen dollars. They have some agreements in place. One is for some computer changes that they're doing, and another is for some lighting that they're doing. And I do have their purchase orders and some agreements I have got.
LED lighting?
I believe it is, yeah.
So, this is the exact amount that they need to do with that?
And they have to have the selectmen approve their encumbrance. And then we have Sewer II study.
That's the inflow infiltration study that we had hoped was going to get done this summer, and for various reasons, it didn't. Part of it was, they got a late start, and then towards the later part of the summer, they didn't have enough rainfall to do the study. So, there are few companies that actually do this work, and they were booked earlier in the summer, and we could book them, and they were gone. So, we hope that they'll get booked early this year, and we'll actually do the work.
Hopefully, we don't have to have rain all of June.
Oh, yeah.
Just because they'll be able to do it then.
So, those are considered-
There wasn't enough rain last June.
I was going to say, too bad, they weren't ready.
Those are considered outside or other funded encumbrances. That totals seventy thousand five nineteen. So, the total encumbrances of the other funds and the general fund is four hundred eighty-eight thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Then we've got the Highway Garage Study. I just wanted to note that it's a non-lapsing account of five thousand dollars per the warrant article. I just wanted to address this on this, so that everyone knew that there was still that money there.
And I wanted to say that that Garage Study Committee did all the work that you saw tonight at no cost to the town, so this would probably be used to get to the next step. You know, there were things that were requested tonight, additional studies on energy consumption, the, I'm running blank now. Thank you, survey, that we could use those kinds of.
So, you need a motion?
We need two motions. One, to approve the top list, and then the two for the library and the sewers are separate, I think.
We can do it in one. Let's be efficient.
Do it all at once?
Unless, yeah, let's be efficient.
Unless there's something in here you don't agree with. Let's be specific.
I mean, if we agree with all of these-
I'm joking. Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. Just going to reach over and slap you.
Some long arm. So, I move that we approve all of the encumbrances as have been presented to us tonight.
Second, then. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Mike, it looks like you have to sign that.
Uh, which one?
See, there's a line up there.
Oh, okay. Sorry, mark the local one.
Here, right on my-
Who do we have next, Karen?
We've got somebody raising their hand.
Bring your crayons. Today's what the twenty-third?
Yep.
Okay. And if you had a number of the public that would like to comment?
Oh, Dan, I'm surprised. I've seen problems where streets were paved, repaved, then within less than a year, they come in and put improvements in. It's kind of frustrating. And Karen mentioned that Bridge Street's ceiling maintenance, and I'm wondering, I don't really know the whole thing about it, but the thing that comes to me is, if we're talking about connecting Saranack to Bridge Street, mightn't we wait until we find out what we're going to do before we spend money and then have to maybe tear something up?
That might have been a missed quote. I don't think it's Bridge Street.
Okay, I'm going to let George address part of it.
The encumbrance from that warrant article is bridge sealing. The sealing of the concrete bridges is a maintenance issue.
It's not Bridge Street, okay.
Karen missed focus.
She did say Bridge Street.
She did say Bridge Street.
Sorry.
And part of the reasons that there was, during all the changes we had this summer, we dropped the bomb, actually getting the work done, but we're in the process right now of purchasing more of the sealant.
My question is moot.
Very good. All right, so we are into, all right, George, you have an update?
No, we didn't.
Oh, we didn't. Wow. Well, that's what happens.
We did it for him.
Very good, okay. Old business. Do you have any old business? Okay, new business? Nope. Okay, other business? Oh, we have to approve minutes.
Okay. Take a motion that we approve the minutes of December ninth.
Okay, second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
I have a question. Okay. I have a couple of questions.
Is this dealing with-
This is with the-
December ninth?
Yeah.
Okay.
Where we're talking about the community house and having one of us join with them on liaison basis, I'm using the minutes I took off the, I mean, I have to tell them. It says here, Seal Brat said he would be willing to work with the Board of Directors of the Community Center. I think what I said is representing the select board, I would, I would work, because the question came to us as the board, so I'm the one that agreed to, you know, work with them on behalf of the select board. So, just, you know, word into that effect.
Where is that?
I can't tell you, because I took it off of mine. It's somewhere near the end of the paragraph, before we go into appointments.
Okay, it's about three lines up. Brat said he would be willing to work with the Board of Directors.
Representing the select.
Represent the board's line.
Right.
Okay.
The other item, this is under the appointments when Scott was here, and it's about three-quarters of the way down. A lot of communities are against this. Let me go up here. Egan said that there are two places this could affect the town. This had to do with the retirement cost. The first would be a bond rating, but the bond companies are aware of what this item is. A lot of communities are against this. Didn't he say, or maybe I'm misremembering this, that a lot of the communities have the same, this same documentation issue? So, it was, they hadn't included those costs. That's what I think he said in terms of the communities, not that they were against it, but that they hadn't complied.
I think it was both. I think there are some communities that flatly refused to comply.
He says that later on, but I thought at that point, it was that, but it was just a point of clarification. Now, the last one, Fred, I'm sorry to do this, goes all the way to the panhandlers' discussion at the end of the, and your quarter is saying, Moody said there are specific laws for First Amendment rights and people's ability to ask for donations. Do you remember if he used the word donations, or if you used the word money? And I really don't remember, I honestly don't.
I thought the word donations was used.
Well, let me just, I went to Webster, and, because the word panhandling is in here as well. I mean, I make, we all make donations. I don't necessarily think I'm making a donation when I'm approached by somebody on the street. So, according to Webster, a panhandler, panhandler is to accost-
A cost?
Cost. Passersby on the street and beg from them, yeah, beg from them, or to obtain by accosting and begging from them. So, the word accost is defined as to confront boldly, to solicit for sexual, whatever he favors.
I thought it was just somebody asking for money.
No, I'm going over definitions here because, I'm going over the definitions for a reason, because I don't consider donations, you're right, it could be donations, because when I went and got the definition of donations, it's to give a gift. To go and look for the definition of gift, it's to provide assistance. And so, the donation word is correct because it ties to a gift in one of the definitions. I mean, there are six different definitions of gift, but this is one of them.
I'm hearing a hair split here.
We're hearing a hair split for a reason, and the reason why is, this topic is a negative, and we dealt with this twice, and I don't believe it's a donation. If you said it, fine, and it fits anyway, but a panhandler is not seeking donations. They're begging, and we're going to bring this type back, and that's how this ends, and I wanted to just clarify this.
Sure.
Gilman said they were not going to come to any conclusion tonight and move on to the next item on the agenda. What I think we said was that we'd be bringing this back in some form in January or February. Speaking for some of the merchants, I just want to say, they're not too concerned about the two or three people on Main Street right now. We're concerned about the ten or fifteen that could possibly be here if this continues to grow. Remember, we got into the discussion-
Yeah, we were talking about the Walmart.
So, we didn't dismiss this. We just said we'd bring it back.
Right, and when it gets to be ten or fifteen or whatever, and the merchants on the Main Street care enough about it to be interested in working with the town to figure out a way to deal with it, then we deal with it.
Well, the other thing was the safety issue that was-
Which is one we were going to address this.
Right, yeah, I mean, that's the first point of contact, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, you're going to leave us alone on the next one, right?
Yeah, we're there.
Okay, all right. Make a motion.
Move a motion that we approve the minutes of December fifteenth.
I second it. Sixteen.
Okay, all those in favor.
Correction.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Very good. Thank you. Okay. All right, so where are we now? Here, oh, great. Now, we're going to go into non-public? Okay.
Motion there we go, to non-public under RSC ninety-one A three, subsection twos A, the dismissal, promotion, or compensation of any public employee, or the dispossessing of such employee, or the investigation of any charges against him or her unless the employee affected the right for public hearing, etc.
I second the motion, but I'm just giving everybody a chance to get out.
Yep.